Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate everybody coming out for this board meeting. We have a forum, so we're gonna take roll call and get right into our meeting. Some people that are got some other engagements that have been following this particular day, so we'll try and move through our agenda items as quickly as possible. But give them, I am do just in terms of the importance of whatever items that we have. Before I say that, I just want to say one thing to the entire staff and people associated with our Housing Authority Agency. On August 3rd, I believe, was the annual meeting at Lake of Woods. And I was there, and I just wanted to say how important getting everybody together like that, that kind of setting and seeing everybody interacting together is so important because you see the importance of every person and the importance of the role that everybody plays. I don't care what department you're in, it's all very, very important to this success of this total operation. And I saw, attempt to see that in my eyes. And this wasn't the first time it's been that way, but it's a buildup to our daily success. And I just want to congratulate the staff and the entire staff. It was excellent. The camaraderie and meetings was really, really great. And all the reports and just seeing you all interact was very important, and I just wanted to echo that. So without further ado, I would just like to have our roll call begin.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Parks?
Here.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Turnbull?
Present.
Commissioner Salem?
Okay, we have a roll call. Can I get approval for the agenda? Need a motion and a second. Uh-oh.
Second.
We'll probably move the second roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
All right, there any public comments on agenda items only? Carrying on, I need approval for minutes from the June 25th, 25, 2025 meeting. Second. Probably move the second roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Present.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Okay. Five.
Yeah, I can explain that. So we're just asking the board to approve an MOU between us and Habitat for Humanity, and this is for the sponsorship of two ground-up builds for 2025. It was approved in our NTW plan, but in order for us to release the funds, we need a board to approve MOU. So the ground-up build is intended to work with. So they're building houses, of course, for Habitat clients, and the goal is to hopefully those homes will go to voucher holders.
Okay. Okay. You have a memorandum of understanding between Holland and Champagne County and Habitat for Humanity, so is there any further discussion about that?
Yes.
Can we have a roll call?
Chairman Henry?
Motion, motion, motion and a second. I'm getting ahead of myself.
So much.
Second. Okay, now it's time for roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for our chief executive officer report.
Okay. All right, so I want to start with our July champion of the month, who is Tavoris Collins. Tavoris is education coordinator for Youth Build, and he is, I've known Tavoris for a very, very long time since he was a young, young, young man, and I've had the opportunity to watch him grow, and I just want to tell you that I'm really proud of you, Tavoris, and congratulations. And Shabon is out today. She's out ill, so Ryan, who's our program lead, he's gonna come up and say some words about Tavoris and the work that he does.
Good afternoon, everyone. So Tavoris is a stand-up guy. He's honest, he's hardworking. When he joined the team, he got ran in and been a team player. He's like my right-hand man at work. Get along great, get along well with everyone at the student's level. He's done an exceptional job for his first year with getting the kids through being fostered and helping our students graduate, so I'm just proud to have him on our team.
Congratulations, Tavoris. Did you have to say something? I gotta get a photo for your mom.
I don't really have much to say. I'm just grateful, grateful for Mr. Ryan, the whole team, everybody in this room. I love the students, I love the kids, love what I do, so yeah, I'm just thankful. Appreciate you guys.
Congratulations, Tavoris. And I will, you know, I'll be pleased I won't sound happy twice. And then our August champion of the month, Sagaro Sanzoli. Congratulations to you. And can Elaine, can you come up and say what it's about?
Good evening.
Oh, man, Santos. Ooh, he was so good. But he's just a really hard-working gentleman, and I am glad to have him. I mean, anything that we ask him to do, he's right on me. Boss me, boss me, man. You don't want to hear that name? But he is a really good parent also, same parent that. And I am so proud of him, and I want to thank him. So that's all I can say.
And would you like to come up and say anything?
No.
We know you're not shy.
Never. But I just want to thank everybody who gives me an opportunity to improve myself, you know, just grateful for the chances that I get, um, to come through. Very much thankful and grateful.
Well, thank you. I have a plaque and a gift card and a trophy for both of you. They all look good. And then next up, I just have a special recognition. I have a special recognition. We wanted to, I think, myself, the leadership team, and just all the staff in general, want to give some special recognition to Ms. Jean Wingler. Jean has been with the Housing Authority for how many years?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. Jean is really, really, really the glue that keeps this place together, and I know we have been stressing her out these last few weeks. We've been going through the Yardi software conversion, which we are live, but we will have a slide on that, and so she's been spearheading that along with helping with maintenance, get the units turned, and so she's been working really hard. So we want to give her special recognition and also let the board know that Jean was promoted to Director of Business Services, so she's got an new title. Thank you, Jean, for all you do, and we all appreciate you, and we know how hard you work.
I want to say one thing, though.
Go ahead.
You know I'm not a public speaker, but I just want to make sure everybody understands this Yardi conversion has been a true team effort. Without the help of Miguel, Neochi, Tiffany, Robin, Jalina, everybody, we would not have gotten this far, so they deserve a big thanks from me.
I'd just like to say that Jean has, we go way, way back to the old building down in Park, and she was very instrumental way back then, and the progression she's made just continues, it's kind of like on, it's kind of a mountain, and you're so instrumental in all of it, but I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
I always tell you, but I want to say that publicly and fair. Yeah, so I'd like to also thank you because I knew when I first came on board, I had a problem with that computer. I had my password locked out of the stuff, because she got me up in that month. Anyway, but maybe too, but I tell you, with that computer stuff, it's something you have to really deal with, type your stuff, because I've been in college, because I've been working with computers for a while, but you have to find a place to put passwords, because, man, you got so many different passwords, you get all screwed up in here. Yeah, that's what went on, okay?
Okay, thank you, Jean. And then on the next slide, we've got some new hires that I don't know if we let the board know. So we've got Rob Lang, who's construction trainer at Youth Build, Ayanna Johnson, who's our HTV specialist, Mariah Taylor, HTV clerk, Deandra Perkins, maintenance tech. We've got Santos, who's maintenance tech as well, Stuart Walker, he's our new education coordinator over at Youth Build, and Noemi Marshawn, who's a project assistant, she's working with James. And then we also have Ronnie Kendall, who's a maintenance tech, Melissa Johnson, property manager, Kelly Novak, who's property manager over at Theater, and Ashari Williams, who was a Youth Build graduate, and she's been a leasing clerk over at the Haven, she was just promoted to Assistant Property Manager over at Denver Square, so shout out to her too. And then August Supportive Services, we assisted nine households, three received security deposit assistance, one received application fee assistance, three received utility assistance in the amount of seventeen sixty-five, one received furniture assistance, one received a bus pass, and two received emergency housing hotel stays. So the August total equals out to eight thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars in supportive services that we spent. All right, we also have a RFP that is out, or a Request for Letters of Interest, that's out asking for organizations to apply for emergency housing funding. And so this was another thing that was approved in our NTW plan, up to one million dollars to support emergency housing, sheltering, hoteling, things like that. And so we've got a letter of interest out right now, and the deadline is August 31st. We're looking to select three to five organizations to look for, to get these funds expected. On August 7th, we also held a community informational, which was really great. Our leadership team came together and they put together presentations about what services they offer for the community. It was also a good time for us to give out our housing catalog, our housing and beyond catalog, that talks about all the different programs that we have. And so we're gonna try to do another one of those in the fall, and hopefully get a little more participation from the community on that one. And then also, our NTW and LSS team hosted a back-to-school event at Oakwood Trace, giving away school supplies. They had a bounce house out there, hot dogs, and a really bad picture of me from the side. But it was really nice. They had the beauty school there doing haircuts and braiding hair, and it was great, great event. And then Oakwood Trace, Garden Beautification, Latricia worked on this. It had iHeart Plants 101 come out and plant flowers at Oakwood Trace with the youth, so they got a chance to participate in that, and when they walk past it every day, they can see the flowers that they planted. And then we had our all-staff summer meeting, which was really nice. We had a good time out at Lake of the Woods, got through some business, and then we had an opportunity to play some games. We catered food for Mama Duke School Truck, which is actually one of the clients that we supported with the Small Business Opportunity Grant, so she was able to, you know, cater to us. So it was really cool, the food was good. And so staff had a good time. Dr. Harry and Francesca came out, and they hung out with us for a little bit, and we played bingo and gave away some cash prizes. Jennifer and Jalina attended, along with Dr. Harry, they attended the NARO Summer Symposium, so they brought back a lot of great information about some of the legislative changes that are happening and what we should be looking forward to, and so they did that in July. Some Youth Build updates, they took the girls group, so the Youth Build has girls group and boys group, and they tried to do mits around with them during those times, so they took girls group to Fireball, and they took some, made some fun candles and lots of fun stuff going on out there. Youth Build also attended Rental Rotary's Installation Event, so that was a good opportunity for them to network and get out there in the community. Latricia hosted monthly Bingo with the seniors, so as always, they enjoyed that, and I know she enjoys it too. And then we also hosted an alumni barbecue, so we were able to bring back quite a few of the youth who we've served and had a barbecue with them over at Pioneer, and they were able to get some resources, we were able to get check stubs from them, which is a big part of the grant, being able to keep in contact with them and show that we are tracking and following them once they leave our program. And then Youth Build also attended Indianapolis Zoo as part of one of their education trainings, because they learned about animals and all of that. And then as we explained earlier, we, as of August, HACC has gone live with Yardi, and so it's our new software. There's a few hiccups, but the team, like Jean said, is really working together to get those things corrected, and we're making progress. It's a change for the staff, it's new, but again, they had to learn TinMash at one point, so we're learning the software that ultimately is gonna help us be more effective. And so overall, we are, we're heading in the right direction, so I'm happy that we got this far, because it's been a long battle. And then an update about Columbia Place, and I actually asked Jean and James to kind of fill in on this one, but we did have the construction bids that came in, and so Jean and James.
Oh, sorry. So we put out an invitation for bid. We have bid opening on the 20th. We only had two bids. Low bid was 4D Construction, who was also doing Maple Grove, Maple Grove renovation. I think it was, Service Master was the second one. They were really pretty close, but I think it was like 1.2 million and some change.
So Fitzgerald is the architect on this project. They brought out one of their new members this week to check out the site, did a couple extra revisions in terms of the drawings, and yeah, Brad just informed me today that they'll be ready to submit for the permits Thursday of next week, so as long as we come to a decision on who we're gonna pick by then, I think it should be smooth sailing from there.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the board on that?
Yeah, I have one. Is that for all of, all of both buildings or just one side?
Um, no, it's just the one.
One, that's it? Not only the both? All of them?
Not at this time, no. We're just focusing right now on the one that burned down.
So the other side is fine, you know, like, and then, we're not tearing it down, like?
I don't think they're tearing it down.
Um, no, not fully tearing it down, but it will be an extensive renovation, right?
Oh.
Pretty much, pretty much done.
You said that once everything's finally, with regards to the bid, you know, against the bid, when do you think they'll start, after they start the work?
Expecting, honestly, as long as the, as long as the city comes back to us with the approved finalized plans, finalized permits, then I don't see why we can't start before the end of October or even November. Really depends on how far we can get with the insurance, wherever our money goes, or the remediation.
Are there any other, we keep being so lonely people? Do they have any safety, the old damn thing they do go down for, like if somebody, apartment you know, fire, they can, there's another security, you know, they don't have anything like that ever? I'm probably digging through the forensics.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
No, but I do know that when the architects in Denver reported the site this week, they did make, you know, did raise some pretty serious security concerns, so that is something that we'll be adding to the scope at the D. I think we're gonna, you know, go through, get through the permits with the city first, and then, you know, figure out what we want to do to make sure, for example, the condensers outside of the building.
Oh, yeah.
We're completely strict, you know, people just, you know, taking, taking apart, so we're considering a lot of options, at least security cameras, possibly contacting the city police to do, you know, actual patrols, even maybe putting up a fence. We will be putting a dumpster there to discourage, you know, excessive dumping by whoever walks by. Yeah, there's a lot of options on the table right now.
Yeah, that's right. Because, well, we're building that new fire department, it's real close, you know, that's right down the street. We had some kind of security management inside that department, they could key off, I don't know if they, I don't know if they have anything like that, but we key off to the, you know.
Kind of thing of the wireman.
You remember that?
Like the wireman.
And there's some things that we can look at, we can talk with the architect and the architect, and see what, you know, options we have.
We explore what it stays, as far as the security goes, you know.
I think that would mean something, if you have to look in for the rest of your departments too, that way, if something happens, if somebody, apartment getting on fire, you secure the rest of the department real quick, like maybe into the fire department, you could squash it real fast, honey, we are, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, guys.
I would like to say in regard to that, it's taken an exceptional amount of time to get through all the different hoops. A fire occurred July 7th, a year ago.
Last year, July 2nd, last year.
July 2nd or 7th, I don't remember, and I've received some calls, you know, and tell people that, because it's kind of, it's a real ice or water down the street, and it's been sitting there so long, I just, you know, tell them it's a process that we have to go through, and it's a lot of red tape, and I certainly think compared to me, we've gone through a lot of red tape, went through a lot of hoops, so it would be really, really good to see, see some actual work being started on this project.
Yes, it's coming along. And then on the next slide, we have an update on the staircase renovation, so as of August, phase one is complete, and so we put a few pictures up of the apartments, where they look really, really, really nice. The residents who have moved to their new apartments are happy. In this next phase of construction, the community room is gonna be shut down along with some of the other common spaces that are on the different floors, and the property manager's office, and so what we did was move them into two units, and so we have, was it unit four? I don't know, I can get it to the board if you like, if you like to know it, but it's a unit on the fourth floor that we're using as a community room space for them, so they can sit in their piecemeals, their events, things like that. And then a unit on the second floor is being utilized as a property manager's office, so try to accommodate, you know, the spaces that we have. But the renovation looks really good. If any of the board members would like to go over there and take a look at it, we can get that scheduled. It's, I mean, it's a completely different.
Yeah, I'd like to. I want to know when the elevator was out, taking home, really, you know, storing stuff for them, but I'd love to, if you ever get notified about the situation with the, certainly we get that a few years.
The bedbugs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, even through this process of moving people, we've been trying to treat the bedbugs and trying to, you know.
Because other people can bring that stuff in, they don't, oh, so if that's, you know, see, do you have anything like, I don't know if this is true or not, but people told me that you can get 70% to 91% and spray your place with that alcohol, would that kill that stuff? I mean, I was just told.
I'm not sure about that. We use a pest control service that comes in on a regular basis, but again, like, you know, residents have to notify us that they have, they have that issue.
That stuff is really expensive, and how they charge you, and if that's true about the alcohol, that would be good, but people would, it's like flashware, you may tend to waste. You see what I'm saying, we can save a lot of money.
Sure, but we do try to educate the residents, you know, different things that they can do to avoid getting bedbugs, such as like not getting furniture or items out of the dumpster or near the dumpster, or, you know, different things like that. And if they see, they have to let us know, so we can come in and treat it right away.
We also have the workbench, make sure you put covering on the mattress, because that way, if you do get bedbugs, they can see it on that mattress or stuff like that, and just careful about getting turned to me by, you know, that way, you can always.
Yeah, and we've been working with also the University of Illinois on that bedbug study, because I think they said that, not, I mean, outside of HACC, but I guess because of the traffic that Champagne has, to have one of the highest bedbug populations, and so we've been working with the university on that study, and so we're learning a lot through the process, and it's been an opportunity for our residents and property managers also to get some education on how to avoid it. Good, this one I have, so we'll be up.
I know that in the, in the fourth page, there's a little more detail, this is our summarized version of the disbursements that happened in July, out of our general fund checking account, we have $404,000. I actually know that, well, like I always say, there's the DDo, we have the DDo, there's several number of papers, so if anything, you see that I want myself a check or, or if it was, but I'd like to bring up some of the main disbursements we had. I was looking at the list, and I don't have a slide for this, but there's three vendors that in total were paid over $55,000, and that's related to the renovations we're doing at Oakwood Trace. We have actually, we're turning around some units with the intention of having them ready to be hominified. So we're, we're doing this investment in renovations, in Oakwood Trace is not the only case, Denver Square also. So that was one thing I wanted to mention, we're also, we have, we have our usual payment to Regional Organic Commission of $11,600 that we're paying for the Maple Grove manner to people who have been relocated. There was also a payment to Ross and Derrick Insurance for over $12,000, and this is related to the insurance for the HIAID grant. And last but not, certainly not least, from the And last but not, certainly not least, uh, from the Maple Grove Development Corporation, there was a payment of almost two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to, uh, for the construction for the, uh, Maple Grove renovation. But they're kind of the highlights of the, uh, the disbursements.
And I found, uh, interject a little bit also. The first building for the Maple Grove, I didn't put this in the PowerPoint, but the first building for Maple Grove, the shelter, that is also, the renovations on that are completing. And the, the second building is expected to be completed September days?
Second week of September.
Second week of September.
I don't know if you can read it from here, but I can know if that, uh, this is the condensed version of our general person's budget. On the packet, you have actually, uh, those, those lines have further, uh, they're further break, breaks over in subaccounts. So basically, I would, uh, I would encourage, uh, you to, to take a look so that you can see specifically in these accounts and subaccounts, uh, where we as compared to, to our budget. But one thing I wanted to point out, uh, is, and I don't know how much, how easy it's going to be to look at this, but the second column on move to work, uh, will be at the HUD subsidies. So I just, I just wanted to point out that we have our, our money that we received from HUD for, for, uh, the subsidies, that HUD payments. But we have been also, uh, receiving, uh, money out of our HUD health reserves. So those have been crucial, uh, for, to be able to, to balance our, our cash flow. All these projects and all these activities, uh, they actually represent several disbursements. And we solely wouldn't be able to, to, just to rely on our admin fees from HUD. So we fortunately do have HUD health reserves that we are using, uh, in these cases. So really, maybe that's, that's what, uh, we have concentrated on, uh, being able to have those, those reserves, uh, dispersed to us. And really, I would, I would just say that, uh, considering these, these expenses, specifically just the breakout of the, of the properties, which in turn consolidates in one of the columns on the first, uh, slide. Uh, I would just, uh, think that we have to be very mindful of, uh, of the expenses that were, during, uh, because of, well, like, development and all the, uh, these, uh, costs.
Yes, proportion.
Oh.
I'm moving. Robert, move to the second. Brokaw, please.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Are there any, uh, public comments on non-agenda items? I mean, none, I mean, I don't have any reason to go into a session at this, at this meeting. We might anticipate in the conference call. Possibly. So with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion and a second for chairman. Robert, move to the second. Brokaw.
Chairman Henry.
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks.
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
You are adjourned at three thirty-six. Thank you very much for this busy day.